In accordance with the meeting, with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board Secretary has forwarded notice of this meeting for advertising by having the date, time placed thereof posted in Seacorkestown Hall on the Bulletin Board of Education Administration Building, as well as notice being provided to the Bergen Record and District website.
Flag salute?
I don't know where the flag is. Is it behind us? Oh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call? I don't think this is working. Oh, oh, okay, okay. Roll call?
Mr. Bartletta?
Present.
Ms. DeDetta?
Present.
Ms. DeBarry?
Present.
Mr. Diombre?
Present.
Ms. Geller?
Present.
Ms. Howard?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Present.
Mr. Lyons?
Present.
Jean, I would like to invite you up to do the presentation. This is Jean Cleary, everyone, from the New Jersey School Board Association, and she is here to give us a presentation.
Okay, so I am Jean Cleary from New Jersey School Boards. I'm the field service representative for your district. I was asked to come out tonight to present on the superintendent evaluation process and the tool that we offer. So I have been told that this is being streamed, the presentation, forgive me if I turn my back, but I should be able to see everything from here. So tonight's agenda, we're going to go over the legal guidelines, the evaluation process, and the evaluation tool. And it's just an important ethics reminder that if you have a family member working in the district as a board member, you may not participate because it's a recognized conflict. I did check the census that the VA and Board Secretary keeps, and it looks like everything's been entered and the notifications for conflicted members have been provided. So what is the purpose beyond, behind the superintendent's evaluation, of course, is accountability. And as board members, one of your functions are to, it's policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And under appraisal for accountability, this tool allows you to provide that oversight and the appraisal for the effective management of the school district. So we're going to take a look just at the legal guidelines behind this and how our tool fits into that for you and the process. So the board shall evaluate the performance of the superintendent annually. That evaluation needs to be in written form. The board and the superintendent need to meet to discuss that evaluation as part of this process. And the evaluation needs to be based on the goals and objectives of the district, the responsibilities of the superintendent, and any other criteria that the State Board of Education means appropriate. Additionally, through statute, we know that the performance has to be done by July 1st each year, and it has to touch on the following: the areas of strength, areas needing improvement, recommendations for professional growth, and indicators of student progress. So the superintendent is the educational leader of the district, and the reason we are all gathered, regardless of the role that we have, is to be focused on student progress and achievement. So a summary conference meeting that will happen at the end should have all of the board members who are non-conflicted, who participate in the process, the majority of those members should be there, present with the superintendent. Thank you for that. So we know that NJQSAC is the, is how districts are evaluated, and through QSAC, under the Governance Indicator, we have two that actually speak to this process. The first one is that the board has a policy and a contract with the superintendent whereby the evaluation is laid out, that it's based on the goals and performance measurements that reflect the highest priority being given to student achievement, and that it goes further to say that it also has to address subgroups, participation, and success, right? So we have to break out the groups, make sure everyone is moving forward and succeeding. Additionally, the superintendent's evaluation has to be completed by July 1st. So if we look at this one section under governance through NJQSAC, 13 points are at stake by making sure that we are aware of the responsibilities. Another thing on A that I kind of skipped over is actually what we're doing tonight, that you receive training in this process so that you have a full understanding of the why behind what you're being asked to do. So the question comes up, is it a requirement to use New Jersey's tool to do this evaluation? And it's not. However, it is already covered in the district dues that are paid to New Jersey School Boards for the year. It's an optional service and one that has the benefit of providing a standardized methodology and a process to meet all the statutory requirements that this has to encompass. It also, our tools are also developed in collaboration with NJASA, the Administrators and Supervisors Association, because of course, there's a stake in that of professionalism to make sure that this tool is really valuable. And it allows for full participation of all non-conflicted board members. So before we even start, there are three things to just consider to make sure that the process goes as smoothly as possible. So is the census up to date? And it appears that it is. I have to commend you because all of the emails that were on the census, where your district issued emails, you should, I always use this as a commercial, never use any other email for board business because you're opening yourself up to involve trouble. So has the board identified all members conflicted? I am aware of two that have been indicated in the system. If you are a board member and believe you may have a conflict or have a question about that, you should really be asking that so that I can be notified in writing if I have to make any of those changes. And has importantly, the board developed an evaluation calendar? So we see here, there's a sample evaluation calendar that kind of gives you a general idea of what should be happening every month. But looking at the process, one of the things that's really strongly recommended is that you as a board determine the dates, right? So knowing the date when the superintendent expects to complete his section, because you can't start before that's completed, allows you to know when you would be expected to start, and you should have a conversation and an understanding of what's the date that you should all be completing that by. That keeps this process moving and allows for me to then compile the results and turn them over to the president. The next thing that has to happen is you, the participating members, have to get together in executive session to discuss, compile the report, and agree on the majority opinion for each section. So that meeting has to be set, so that's something that should be...
Excuse me, Cleary, can you speak into the mics because they can't hear you? The public cannot hear you speaking?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't want to get off, but it was a little faint because I have...
Okay, is this hell, is this better? Let's see if we move it a little closer. Okay, I'll try not to move around.
Yeah, what did we get?
Thank you for bringing it to my attention. We have certainly enough books. I appreciate the teamwork. Thank you for bringing it to my attention, okay? So, okay, so as I was saying, this is the, this is a sample calendar to walk you through the process of what should be happening when. But as a board, you should really be looking at setting when you as individual board members are expected to complete your part, what's the date of the meeting where you will come together in executive session to discuss and determine what the majority opinions are for each section of the evaluation, and then again, when you will be meeting with the superintendent for the required discussion about the evaluation, okay? So just looking at the evaluation process that we have here, the district goal setting occurred earlier in this past year, right? Where the board works with superintendent to identify district goals, then the district goal progress updates are given throughout the year. The next little point to look at is that the superintendent evaluation, you may have a pre-conference, I'm going to just table that for another slide, which I'll get into that a little bit more. And then the superintendent begins the evaluation. He's going to put in the district goals and do his self-assessment. When that's completed, when he completes it and hits the button that he's finished, he will have a 48-hour window to go in and make any changes that pop into his head that he thinks he wants to add, human nature being what it is. After 48 hours, a, an email will go out to all board members indicating that it's now time for you to begin your part of the process. That email will look like it's coming from me, it will actually be auto-generated, but my information will be on there if you have any questions. You will complete your part by the time that you agree to, and when everybody has, I will provide the compiled report so that you can meet, have that discussion, create the majority opinions, and the final document, okay? And then the summary conference happens with the superintendent, and at that summary conference, importantly, that allows for any minority opinions for any part of that evaluation, because this is a majority opinion document. Minority opinions are then properly shared verbally, and although it's not the majority opinion, doesn't go in the document, that information could be valuable to the superintendent for his future consideration as he goes forward. So talking about the pre-evaluation conference, it is not a requirement to hold it. Sometimes boards determine with their superintendent that it may have value to just talk about the process and expectations, provide a quick update on something, if there's new information that maybe hasn't been, had an opportunity to be presented at the board meeting. Allow, quite frankly, for the calendar-setting dates for when you all need to have this completed by, and any discussion of student progress or individual questions you might have for the superintendent that would help this process be efficient and move along well. So the district goals assessment is the eval, it's stated in statute that the evaluation shall be based on the goals and objectives of the district. So the district generally creates three to five goals that are going to be the laser focus of the district towards student achievement and moving the district forward for students. The CSA evaluation process is an annual collaborative process between the board members and the superintendent. So we are all here to serve students and student achievement in the district, and we have well-defined but different roles to play depending on whether you are a board member or whether you are the superintendent. This is a way for accountability that's built into the system, but it's also for conversations to happen because we want to be able to identify what is going well, we want to be supportive of the superintendent for continuous growth and professional development as necessary because a successful superintendent has successful students. So that's the purpose of working as a team and building those conversations productively and move forward. Action plans, as we know, the district sets those goals in collaboration, the board and the superintendent working together, and those action plans were put in place, and those action plans actually are things that move the district forward to the achievement of those goals, and should also have included the identifiers of how will we know we've gotten there, right? How will we know this is successful? What are we gauging it by? So here we just have a slide that shows the district goals assessment and what you can expect to see. There will be, the superintendent will rate himself and then put in any comments, this is where he will link information and supporting evidence for why he is evaluating himself that way, and then the board members underneath very similarly grade on that goal, particular goal, and then also can make comments. One of the things that's not written here that I'd really like you to remember though as board members... One of the things that's not written here that I'd really like you to remember though, as board members completing this, is that this is a superintendent's evaluation and you really need to avoid identifying any other staff member, whether by name or by title that would identify them. That can create problems, so when the compilation is done, I'll review it. Um, even a positive comment about another staff member can be seen as an evaluation of them and that would be out, that would be improper. So to avoid that, we look at that, we make suggestions for redaction of those statements. And your board attorney would have to weigh in on whether or not that has to happen, which, how, you know, could affect the process, how it gets done, and also any fees that may, um, be required to the attorney. Here we have the sample compilation of the goal. So for each goal, it'll look similar to this, the goal will be stated. It will say what the superintendent's comments were towards that goal. Underneath it, it'll have all of the board comments for that goal. And then there'll be a grid that identifies where, um, the superintendent rated himself and where, how many of the board members rated in each category. So standards are important, but it's important to understand where they come from. Uh, I didn't make them up, New Jersey school boards didn't make them up. They come directly from professional standards for educational leaders. Um, this is recognized as, uh, the professional, what we would expect to see in our professional leaders and education superintendents. And it reflects their qualities of leadership, um, and the work that they do that's integral, again, to student achievement, right? We all have, um, skills and talents, but we're really focusing here on what those are that pertain to a superintendent, being able to work effectively and efficiently for the outcomes we want to see for students, right? That's why we're doing this. Um, this process assists the board in identifying the areas of strength and where more focus is needed. So, there are six standards that are covered in the evaluation process. Mission, vision, and core values, governance, ethics, and professional norms, operations management, curriculum, instruction, assessment, and school improvement, community of care, equity, and family engagement, and professional capacity, the community of school district personnel. So, that's just so that you'll have and you'll understand that it's composed of those six, um, standards. Here, what you'll see is what you'll see for each one of them. It'll give you, uh, the standard, here it's standard one, which is clearly mission, vision, and core values. It'll give a little statement about what the purpose of that is. It will have a rating scale and you just have to, uh, each time you're going through it and going to a different, um, standard, please make sure you're reading that rating scale because they change depending on the standard. So you don't want to assume that it's always the same. Um, you'll see there, the resources to consider that would support the evaluation and, um, the indicator ratings. So for each standard, it's broken out in indicators that will help you determine where the strengths and, um, opportunities for growth are. And, uh, then also on the bottom, there'll be an area for board comments. So on this next slide, excuse me, um, we just have a sample of what a compilation for a standard will look like. It'll have the standard clearly on the top, it'll say what that standard is, and underneath it, all of the indicators. And in this grid format, we see how, um, how many people for each indicator gave what response, right? So it's a way to see all of that together, that information, which will help you in your discussions about identifying majority, right? What the majority opinion is. So the annual performance report is a compilation of non-conflicted members' opinions. And I know I keep saying it, but conflicted members cannot participate in any way. And participation includes in informal discussions with board members who are participating in the evaluation or the meeting, um, in executive session where the opinion, majority opinion is developed, and the meeting with the superintendent to deliver that, right? So we need to understand that. Um, the annual performance report is the evaluation which reflects the majority opinion on performance on your district goals, um, standards, strengths, and focus areas. So, the annual performance report, the steps of how that's going to happen, um, all non-conflicted members need to discuss the, uh, determine the majority opinion. Rice notice has to be given to the superintendent in advance, the board, the BA, board secretary will handle that for you. Anytime that you're talking about a staff member's employment, they have to receive Rice notice in advance. Um, once the majority opinion is determined, we have a template that's available on our website. We'll send it to the president, she will, um, be drafting that document. And then it will be discussed with superintendent at the summary conference meeting. Another, um, good practice is to send it to him in advance of that meeting because it's very, very hard to read and digest something with everyone else's eyes upon him for the first time. So it gives him a chance to read it and consider it and have a valuable discussion when we get together. So next, we look at the annual performance report template. This is available, this will help walk you through actually creating that final summary document. It will, um, cover the leadership standards and overall assessment. In the section for overall strengths and areas for growth, you can check off multiple categories as you find appropriate. There's also an area for board comment to be put there. So, um, things to just remember, the annual summary conference overview, the Rice notice needs to go to the superintendent, uh, identifying the time and location of where you'll be meeting to discuss his employment. Um, share that report with him before your meeting with him. It's a majority of the board members who are not conflicted. The minority opinion should be, um, given an opportunity verbally to be heard and considered, but doesn't go in the written report. And the minutes of that meeting have to show that you met for the annual summary conference. That will help be your, um, evidence for your QSA. So the superintendent will begin the evaluation, the board members will complete it independently. It's also, for those who haven't completed it before, um, it's anonymous, right? So what that, what that allows you to do is be, um, reflective. This is not a tool of, um, anything else, right? It's not supposed to be negative, it's supposed to be really considering all of the evidence, reading that objectively, and then completing this, um, and taking care to do that. We will, at New Jersey School Boards, we compile it, we turn it over to your board president. Um, again, remember all the Rice notices. Um, the president is the one that will write that up, reflective of your majority opinions that you come to together and sign off on it at that summary conference meeting prior to July 1st. I'm always a little concerned when we say July 1st because by statute, that is the truth. May and June get very busy in school districts. So I strongly recommend that you agree upon the dates of completion and set those meeting dates because everyone's calendars get more complicated than they are tonight. So who keeps a copy? Um, New Jersey school boards cannot keep a po, uh, keep a copy of this, so next year you can't ask me for it. We purge all of them by December thirty-first of each year because they are personnel documents. Um, it's the rec, it's recommended that of course, the superintendent keeps a copy, a signed copy for himself, electronic, um, or a hard copy or both. And the signed copy, um, is generally kept by the board attorney, but that can vary depending on what your agreement is with your board attorney. Um, so you may want to ask him that directly. So, just a consideration of what the evaluation is, right? It's not, even though we're talking about it and doing it at this time of the year, it's not a once-a-year process. This is a reflection of all of the work that's been going on throughout the year and the updates that you've received towards, um, the achievable's under those district goals. Uh, it's a review of performance over a whole year, not just the last time that you may have met as a board. Um, the progress updates that you get through the year are really a way for that to, two-way communication, similar to how the evaluation is meant to be as well. Um, if you have questions during the course of the year and need an update, request it, right? Um, don't hold everything so that you can take it out on the superintendent in the evaluation, right? We, we want ongoing, productive, good teamwork and dialogue because you're all here to serve students. And we want to restrict anything that pulls us off working well together as a team. Um, it's responsibility of all eligible members who are not conflicted to participate in this. Uh, as board members, and I was one myself for six years, um, I know it's, it's difficult to time the schedule to make the time to do it, but short of hiring a new superintendent, the annual performance report of the superintendent is one of your most important duties and responsibilities. Um, you're doing it on behalf of your students, that's why we're here. So I'm going to take a moment, um, now that we've concluded really talking about the superintendent evaluation because the board self-evaluation, um, has been updated this year. And I just want to, uh, take one moment to really go over it because it's very important. When we look at the evaluation process for the superintendent, it's a measure of accountability to ensure that things are working positively towards, um, the direction we want to go for our students. Likewise, doing the board self-evaluation builds confidence in the community that the board is recognizing their responsibility to hold themselves accountable. Um, what the evaluation, um, how it's changed this year is that our tool has been changed to focus more on the board's governance as a team. Um, areas in the past that talked about individuals, how I feel as an individual, those are, have been removed because we really need board members to focus on the importance of working together as a productive team. This year, um, one different thing is that the board president will have to go in first and put in this year's board goals. If there were none, she would have an indicator to just click and say there were none. Once that step is completed, it's open and available to all, all board members to complete independently and again anonymously. You may want to consider, uh, setting, although there's no certain time you have to do it by, but if you're seeing the benefit of doing it, you should set a time, uh, when everyone would be expected to complete it so that I can run the compilation and provide, come in and provide a report. And the reason that that's important is that a board self-evaluation can help identify your strengths and your areas of challenge or areas of growth for your governance. Um, because the work you do is so important to student success, we want to really stay focused on that. And the board self-evaluation and the report and analyzing the data that you're providing, the feedback that you're providing, will help lead you down the path of identifying what are appropriate board goals for the upcoming year? And how can we have a conversation about setting your own action plans with deliverable dates of when things are expected to be done so that, similar to the progress updates for district goals, the board can report out to the community what your board goals are and the progress you're making and that. And that helps to build confidence in the community, also in the important work that you're doing for their students. Okay, so there's some information here. Um, these last slides are really just to show you that if you, uh, when you do this, both of the evaluations, you need to just go to our New Jersey School Boards website, scroll down, you'll see where it says evaluations. You will have to sign in with your credentials to access this. It'll show, this is just a sample of what you'll see for the board self-evaluation and, uh, the rating scale. And you just enter in and complete that. Um, just photos of what it looks like, uh, what you can expect to see. There's an area for comments to be included as well. And for our online service, right under the evaluation on our website, under the CSA evaluation, there's, um, hyperlinks to, uh, information that can be helpful if you have questions. And similarly, for the board self-evaluation and FAQ to, um, give you some information. Of course, as your field service representative, any one of you can reach out to talk to me. I always try to provide that information for you. If I don't have an answer to your question, it's my responsibility to try to help connect you with the, the right person or get that for you. So that is really my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Okay, seeing none?
Grace, I do, I just wanted to see if anyone else wanted to first. On page five, you discussed QSA.
Yes.
And I know how important that is, but I'm not sure if everyone understands, you're saying this superintendent's evaluation, how that can impact us with QSA, the quality, single accountability consortium, I think it stands for.
Yes, exactly.
So is, is there any more additional information you could give to us about, you said thirteen points?
So, so as it was broken up on that slide, each part of that, so you've had one part of it tonight was your training, so that's good. And I'm assuming that you have your contract and policies about the evaluation. So, um, what we're showing there is that by following the steps as I've laid them out to you tonight, you will have earned those thirteen points. QSA is broken out in sections and you have to achieve eighty percent in each area. And by doing that, this is thirteen points towards the goal of achieving that. And it's actually specifically the responsibility of the board. So some of the things that happen that are, um, the entities responsible are administrators, superintendent, right? But this specifically goes to the responsibility of board members.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Jean, thank you for your time.
Of course.
We really appreciate you coming, thank you. Grab something sweet on the way out in the water. Paul, you're up.
All right, um, so since I unfortunately was not here last, uh, month, I will be starting from, uh, what happened in February. Um, with February, in short, there were a lot of guest speakers. Um, C-Caucus alum Amanda Neshawat presented to our Science Club. Um, President of C-Caucus Rotary, Keely Repass, uh, spoke to our Rotary Interact Club. And, uh, Ms. Erbs's US II History Class spoke with, um, Mr. Tomas Bordas, who talked about his arrival, uh, to the United States from Cuba, um, during the historical Operation Pedro Pan that brought over fourteen thousand Cuban children, um, during the nineteen sixties. Um, in addition, although this happened in January, I didn't get to, uh, speak about it then. Um, Ms. Westwester, our supervisor, Supervisor of Guidance, her mother, um, Elizabeth Calabresi, she, um, shared her journey about, um, escaping communist Hungary during the nineteen fifty-six revolution. So that's, uh, really cool and the fact that we have like living proof of, um, how important what we're learning in class and through our extracurricular activities is like really remarkable. Um, Ms. Swami, our, um, she's a math teacher and a STEM advisor here. She presented a, um, session titled Counting on Each Other: Building Community Through a STEM Task at the Early Career Teaching Conference, uh, at her alma mater, the University of Maryland. Um, she's also been guiding us a lot through our STEM fair projects and I really think that she deserves some recognition, uh, for that. Our art department also produced twenty-four pieces of artwork, um, for the Scholastic Art Competition. Um, among those twenty-four, there were two gold key winners, ten silver key winners, and twelve honorable mentions. These, um, two gold key winners, Iris Lynn and Grace Ng, they qualified to compete at the national level in New York City. And this competition, the winners will be, uh, announced on March twenty-sixth. Thank you to Ms. Jimenez, Ms. Linder, and Ms. Guevara for the guidance and support, um, throughout this entire competition. Um, in addition, we had two junior members of, uh, the girls' flag football team, uh, attend the Flag Football Media Day hosted by the New York Jets. Over there, um, they had students from over forty other high schools in New Jersey that spoke with Delilah Autry and Isabella Garassi, members of the USA Olympic Flag Football Team. And to wrap up February, uh, we had the Hoboken, Weehawken, and C-Caucus Tri, uh, Triop Ice Hockey Team. Um, they won their third McMullen Cup in the past four years. And also, our cheer team won state champions in the Group One All-Music category. Moving on to March, um, spring sports has, uh, have started and I'd like to thank all the coaches who make all these, uh, things possible. March fifth, um, our English National Honor Society, we went to Hubert Street School and we shared our favorite stories, uh, from under their age. And it was really awesome getting there, um, seeing a few teachers. I, I was really glad that they remembered me and, uh, it was really a great time that, um, that we had there. In addition, um, a little before that, on March third, we had four students representing the high school at the Hudson County Showcase. This was held at the Liberty Science Center and our four students are Shriya Anandar, Isha Patel, Simran Batla, and Sarah Velos. They competed over, uh, against over three hundred students from grades five through twelve, um, and they presented their research projects there. We also had our NJGPA, which is required for, uh, the juniors over here. They, uh, took it from March tenth to thirteenth and were advised to get a good night's sleep and a healthy breakfast. and were advised to get a good night's sleep and a healthy breakfast to demonstrate their knowledge to their best ability. And throughout all of March, students will be helped by their guidance counselors to carry their academic year for next year. So I'd like to thank the guidance department for working so hard and helping our students as well. And finally, our literary club purchased their first, actually published, sorry, their first issue of the literary magazine for the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five school year. So they really put a lot of work in compiling this, their writing and artwork that our students have produced. So I urge you guys to read that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
To the chair, may I respond to Paul?
You can, yeah.
Ms. Jean, thank you for that information.
Of course.
I made note that Mayor Grinelli, the city council, honored the C-Caucus team at City Hall, which was wonderful. And I would like to see our board start recognizing these folks that have done well. And Paul, you mentioned a few other things tonight. People that won gold key winners and different things. So if possible, we can discuss, the board can discuss, giving them some kind of recognition at our open board meetings so that they know that we, you know, I'm glad City Hall does it, but I think it could also be nice if the board recognized, especially this C-Caucus team, you know, they had great achievement, the ice hockey team, and any other, we had spelling bee winners recently and the art organization. So I hope that we can in the future start bringing them in and having them part of the open meetings so that, you know, the board recognizes their achievements.
Yeah, absolutely. I actually have a list of more postseason honors. For the winter season, we had from boys swimming, girls swimming, wrestling, boys' girls' basketball, bowling, cheer, and ice hockey. So I have a big list of names that I could go through down right now. Starting off, James Valoro with the fifty-yard freestyle honorable mention, all division. Girls' swimming, Abigail Montero, two-hundred-yard freestyle honorable mention, all division. And for wrestling, we have CJ Kudjuski, first-team all-division. Santino Leone, second-team all-division. Alexio Gonzalez, second-team all-division. Ian Marqu, second-team all-division. Dan Casilla, second-team all-division. Aiden Martorano, second-team all-division. Justin Martinez, honorable mention, all-division. Moving on to girls' basketball, we have Gabriella Torillo, first-team all-division. Eva Alusi, first-team all-division. Julia Pozo, second-team all-division. Eva Diadetta, second-team all-division. And Gianna Torillo, honorable mention, all-division. For boys' basketball, we have In Concepcion, first-team all-division. Adam Canionis, second-team all-division. Carter Backheel, honorable mention, all-division. For bowling, we have Nicholas Tobar, honorable mention, all-division. With cheer, they were the NJIC South Division Champions and the Group One All-Music State Champions. From there, we have Abigail Jones, the NJCDCA Second Team All-State, and Anna Formesano, NJCDCA Second Team All-State. And finally, with ice hockey, they were the twenty twenty-five McMullen Cup Champions. And we have In Sam, first-team all-division. Ian Fu, first-team all-division. Christian Farulo, first-team all-division. Luke Bocca, second-team all-division. Marina Boya John, honorable mention, all-division. And Miles Engley, honorable mention, all-division. That's everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. On behalf of the entire board, I think I can speak for everyone and say that we are so proud of all of, all of the accomplishments that you mentioned for academics, athletics, across the board. We're very proud of that, and we are very lucky to be part of a district that has great students, great administrators, teachers, everybody. We're just very lucky. And to what you said, Jerry, we can definitely discuss, we can definitely discuss something like that. So thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay. Acting Superintendent's Report?
As I spoke to some of the teachers over the last couple of weeks, we are in the home stretch. Soon as spring hits, you're down to about twelve weeks. So before you know it, it's going to be graduation time. So make the most of these next few months, right, Paul? Good luck to everybody.
Thank you, Charlie. Business Administrator Board Secretary Report?
I gotta make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the harassment, intimidation, bullying findings as reported by the acting superintendent and are available at the administrative offices for review.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Now, Business Administrator Board Secretary Report?
Good evening. On tonight's agenda, under Finance, we will be adding Resolutions R. four-point-one-zero through R. four-point-one-four, which reads as follows. I will not read all of each resolution individually. I will just read the synopsis and give the docket numbers. Be it resolved by the C-Caucus Board of Education, herein referred to as the Board, that the terms, stipulations, and conditions as established in the settlement agreement and general release in the matter pending in the Superior Court of New Jersey, Law Division, Hudson County, bearing the following docket numbers. H-U-D dash L dash two-four-six-zero dash two-zero. Resolution H., docket number H-U-D dash L two-four-five-eight dash twenty. Docket number H-U-D dash L two-four-six-nine dash twenty. Docket number H-U-D dash L dash two-eight-four-nine dash two-zero. And docket number H-U-D dash L dash four-seven-nine-zero dash one-nine, which is annexed to each resolution, are hereby adopted and approved by the Board of Education. Finally, tonight, we will be submitting a tentative budget to the county superintendent for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year. This budget maintains all programs that are in place. I would like to thank our acting superintendent, administrators, the assistant business administrator, and the entire business office for everyone working together collaboratively, which has enabled this district to maintain our high standards in educating our children for the future. Thank you to you all. I greatly appreciate all the support we received in this budget process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Grace. I have a question. You said R. four-point-one-zero, and then, and...
Through R. four-point...
One-four.
One-four, yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you say through. Okay, okay. So each one has its own number?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Get back to my page. Public Forum? None. Okay. Governance Committee?
Under Governance, we are extending our contract with Charlie Voorhees to extend his time as our acting superintendent until June thirtieth. We are also approving staff for our interventions program for NJGPA, which will be funded by a grant. And last month, we approved an intern social worker, who is none other than our own Abby Gonzalez from last year, which will be from May through December, which will be a great benefit to our district. And because of the unused snow days, our last day of school will be June twenty-fifth. I'd like to make a recommendation to accept the acting superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. one-point-zero-one through R. one-point-one-six and Motion M. one-point-zero-one.
Second.
Can I ask for conversation on this?
Yeah, I'm going to say discussion.
Thanks.
Discussion, yep.
Through the chair. And I know this is a great meeting, a lot of really good information. If I could ask something moving forward. A lot of people reached out to me because of the changes in the school calendar district, which are important, and they're necessary because we can't control the weather. But they asked if there could be input from the community on what days they're going to change because people plan on the calendar, we decide in the spring. And then, when it's changed in the following spring, people have already made arrangements for, you know, coverage or for whatever stuff. So they've asked if we could please notify the community and say, look, these are some changes, but you have input, that we can reach out with input. But everything else, you know, that's, some people have reached out to us, just wanted to spread that, to pass them on tonight. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
And then, under Policies, we had first and second readings on multiple policies, and some of them...
Yeah, wait, we have to call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes, I have to recuse from R. one-point-zero-nine. Yes to everything else.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes, I will need to recuse myself on R. one-point-oh-two.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Under Policy, we have done something with Strauss Sme, almost like an audit, to make sure our policies were up to date. And we have some first and second readings of some. So I'd like to make, to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. two-point-zero-one through R. two-point-zero-two.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes. Grace, from Governance, I have to also recuse from R. one-point-zero-two. Yes to this one.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Education?
Good evening, all. The Education Committee, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice, it's occupational hazard. The Education Committee had its monthly meeting on March eleventh. We received updates on the developments in curriculum, on the new courses being offered in our district, and summer courses that are being offered in the district. In addition, the committee members were updated on our special education programs and related services. According to the report, our Special Ed Department is doing great, with no issues or concerns to report. Our administration shared that they're planning a few special education events in our district, and also they're planning to install Fun and Function Sensory Hallway at Clarendon School. And one of also very exciting news comes from our high school. Our high school is excited to announce thirty-eight Seals of Biliteracy for twenty-twenty-five graduating seniors, and Seal of Biliteracy certifies a full proficiency in a foreign language. Out of the thirty-eight, three students received this in two languages, which is absolutely amazing. Congratulations to our talented students and their amazing teachers on this achievement. It's truly remarkable. Now, we are going into fourteen parts. So I would like to motion to accept the recommendation of the acting superintendent to approve and adopt Resolutions R. three-point-zero-one through R. three-point-zero-three. And these are the resolutions having to do with field trips, approving curriculum, and also nursing services plans.
Second.
Discussion?
Through the chair?
Yep.
At Tantiana, thank you for running a great meeting. I have been pushing for a Special Ed Committee since I got on this board, even prior to getting on the board. And I thank the president for reassuring me through several comments at the education meeting, four specific times, that they will ensure that all of our Special Ed students' issues are addressed through the Education Committee. They don't feel there's a need to start a special committee or subcommittee or an ad hoc committee. They guaranteed us that everything we need done for the Special Ed Committee will be handled with them. So I appreciate them making that a priority.
I would like to add also, Mr. Voorhees suggested that our new Special Ed Director, Ms. Hennessey, will become a part of our Education Committee meetings, either on a need basis or whenever we need her to discuss something. So thank you for that. Phyllis is always, yeah, she's part of the committee, absolutely, always. Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Operations, Finance?
So during this month's committee meetings, we were updated on a few things. Interviews were conducted for per diem custodians. All head custodians have been trained on the building management system. A total of three-hundred-and-fifty school due reports were completed this month. Lock replacement project was completed during the break. One hallway is left to be completed for the LED project at Huber Street School. In Clarendon, the basement has been cleared out for storage. There was an upgrade of bathrooms at Clarendon School that has begun. The lighting project has begun at the middle school, high school. The blue and red gym floor and light project is complete. And we will also update it on the finances for the month. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt Resolutions R. four-point-zero-one through R. four-point-one-four, as described below. Second.
Discussion?
So I save this for operations because we're going to make an announcement tonight. The future and how we're going to manage our special services in the lower grades, it's going to begin with a move where we're going to utilize Huber Street School and Clarendon School and try our best with, you know, the lines to get Clarendon School, pretty much twenty-one or so kids will be moving out of there and attending school in Huber Street based on their address. And we're going to try and implement basically two full elementary programs starting in September. So we're figuring out the rooms, we have that worked out. And we already figured out the classrooms. As far as staff goes, that's being almost finished with that. And that will then drive our five-year plan. So we're doing it in the lower grades. We're not going to interfere with the kids in Clarendon School in the upper grades because we've accommodated that over the years, and we don't want to change the siblings and things like that. So we're going to start with R.K. one area. So it's been a plan since last summer. We put the ESYS over in Huber Street School, and we started to look and evaluate our classroom space. And we felt like this was a really good opportunity to balance the ship, so to speak. So it's going to be pretty exciting making that move. And then, like I said, that will generate the five-year plan so that when we sit with architects and things like that, we could now evaluate both buildings to see where we need to go. And not to get too complicated, but, you know, the way we draw the lines of who goes to Clarendon, who goes to Huber, it could change in the future depending on where we're at. And we are looking at all the data of where our students live to see what those numbers look like in the elementary school. So there's a lot of thought in this. And I know we've been discussing this for a while, how we will do it. We're getting close. So I just wanted to, you know, our operations committee, we've had a lot of conversations. But we're moving forward. So transportation is also a very big part of this. So everybody's on board, and everybody understands, and the plan is going to be rolled out. So nice job by everybody.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other discussion?
Through the chair?
Yep.
At the Shared Services Committee meeting with City Hall, we discussed some improvements at the Clarendon School and renaming it. And we said we would work on that as soon as the weather breaks. Thursday, spring starts. So I'm hopeful that we can put this on the front burner and start moving forward to get that work done at that school, especially to recognize the instructor that we lost there so that we can have that area done. So if we can't put that on the agenda, that we can start working towards that with City Hall. And they've offered to be very supportive and help us with the cost of that.
Yep, I agree. I think, did we leave it with the mayor? That they would get back to us?
Yes, the mayor was going to meet with the buildings and grounds, and then they were going to walk Clarendon together. They were just waiting for the weather to get nice, and they would start on it, yes.
Okay, yep, so we'll stay on top of it. You're welcome. Okay. Discussion, anyone else? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Abstain from R. four-point-zero-two and R. four-point-zero-three, and yes to everything else.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
I also have to vote along with Tatiana because we were not here for that time. So yes and everything except for R 402 and R 403.
Thank you.
Can I make a note on this before we move on? A question about the budget being sent forward without us having a detailed conversation about our presentation. And we've been guaranteed that although we are sending it to the superintendent, Melissa Pierce, to review it and sign off on it, that we have open changes to be made on this once it comes back to us. We have till April 30th.
Yes.
So we should be having meetings to discuss and go over the budget fully so that all of us know exactly what we're voting on. So I appreciate the president and the lawyer getting back to us saying that although this is being sent in, there is total fluidity with changing anything we need to do for the upcoming budget.
Correct. And this is just, what we're voting on tonight is just sending the information to the county for, for approval. And to Mr. Lyons's point, we had a conversation with Mr. Fogarty, Mr. Lyons and myself regarding from now until April 30th, we have time to make any changes if we feel that necessary. That's what we were advised by Mr. Fogarty. And we do have a meeting in the books to meet as a board collectively before that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And also would like to, I will be allowed to look at the full budget?
Correct.
Line by line. Thank you.
You're welcome. Safety, security, buildings and grounds?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Business Administrator Board Secretary to approve and adopt resolutions R 5.01 as described below.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Bartletta?
Yes.
Ms. Diadetta?
Yes.
Mr. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Diombre?
Yes.
Ms. Geller?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
There were no ad hoc committee meetings this month. Public forum? Anthony Granieri?
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, yeah. The lawyer just has to make the statement. One second. Yep.
What statement?
You have to read the public forum statement.
This one?
Yeah. Yeah.
The meeting is open to the public for purpose of addressing any subject matter that is pertinent to or directly related to the operation of the Secaucus Public School District. Residents wishing to speak on such items must sign the register provided for this purpose and are required to state their names, address, and subject matter. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. The board may or may not respond to issues raised by members of the public at the time they were raised, but will provide a response if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Please note that the board will not respond to comments regarding students or board employees in light of the privacy rights held by those individuals. Moreover, the board discourages comments about such individuals and not, will not be responsible for such comments. Members of the public who choose to speak during this public session should carefully consider their comments since they could be held personally liable for any statements they make. Finally, please note that in accordance with District Policy Number 1100, the board will not officially comment or respond to any matter mentioned unless it can confirm that the matter has first been brought to the attention of the appropriate school personnel in an attempt to resolve the issue.
Thank you. Anthony Granieri, Secaucus resident, parent of a child with special needs. I want to follow up on what Mr. Voorhees said about improving our early grade special education services. I am excited to hear that. But I am asking once again, have any steps been taken to establish a full-time, fully-integrated and inclusive program for its Secaucus elementary school students? If that has been discussed and has any talks been had with the city or the town to help fund that in the new budget? Also, are there any plans to immediately hire a full-time school nurse for Huber Street School? The current situation of requiring the Millridge nurse to cover both Hoover and Millridge puts all the students at both schools at risk of not having appropriate and timely medical aid should an emergency occur. I'd also like to ask, has the district discussed the concerns brought to the board's attention last month by my wife regarding the use of appropriate language when referring to students with disabilities? And if so, could the board provide an update on those discussions? And lastly, is there any updates for the residents of Secaucus about the process of hiring a permanent superintendent? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to, thank you, Mr. Granieri. Do you want to answer some of that?
Yeah, so you asked a lot, so I'm going to go by what I remembered. Millridge School is how we're going to refer to it. But as you know, obviously, there's different sections. So we'll, if we had to do something along the lines of a call, it's most likely going to go out as Millridge School. Okay? You asked about inclusion. So as you know, inclusion is always something that we have worked on and we do have classes that include inclusion when appropriate. We'll always make sure that we do that. And we're continuing to grow in that direction. What was the other one?
The other one was about-
Nurse, nurse, yeah. It's very difficult to find. Anytime we have to have a nurse cover, it's because we couldn't get a substitute nurse. We worked very hard every morning trying to get substitute nurses, if not if we need them. But we are in the process of trying to figure out how to get a nurse hired. We're constantly trying.
Can I ask one question? Is there any plans specifically about implementing a full-time, full-day, integrated program for the young students in Secaucus that will be there?
We are constantly working on inclusion. That's what I said before. For those that meet those criteria and it's appropriate for them. And we do have some situations right now where it does exist. Again, full-time, full-day for when appropriate. It's there.
Does the board have any updates about hiring a full-time, full-day, full-time-
I hope so.
Not at this time. We approved the R 1.02 to extend Mr. Voorhees to June 30th. But we are in talks about how we are going to move forward, but no update at this time. Thank you. Motion to close?
Motion.
Oh, God, I'm so sorry. Board comments. I'm sorry.
So I just have one comment and it kind of piggybacks off of Gerald. I think Paul does an awesome job at highlighting all of our high school and middle school students. But I was hoping that maybe we can get some, some data to him for our elementary school students because they do really great things down there, too. So I would like to highlight them, like maybe some, not, maybe not the sports because that's recreation and recreation should highlight that, but, but their educational side, I think we should highlight them a little bit because they do have a lot of great educational things that they do, like they're doing drama down there and all these other cool things. So if we can get Paul some things for those elementary kids, too, that would be great.
Yep, I think that's a great idea. We can do that, Charlie, right?
That's easy.
Okay, okay. Sorry. Anybody else? I forgot board comments. I just want to reiterate what I said to you before, Paul, that that was amazing stuff that you shared with us. And on behalf of the board, we're very proud of the district and the kids and everybody, everybody involved. Really good things, good stuff. Anyone else? Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.